I'll call this meeting of the Clackamas County Commission to order and invite you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business is a public hearing where we are sitting as, not as the Clackamas County Commission, but as the Housing Authority Board. And usually Erica Allison is here representing the...
Can you hear it? Is it working?
Seems to be working. And Erica Allison is not here today. She turned up a little bit. So we will proceed without her sitting as the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And before us is a request for an exemption and authorization to use the Request for Proposal method to obtain construction manager and general contractor services for the Easton Ridge Apartments, the renovation project underway there. And Trell Anderson from the Housing Authority is here to explain this to us.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Trell Anderson, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. This is procedural, so I'm going to read into the record and for the public record, outline what the alternative contract process is, why we're asking you to sit as the local Contract Review Board, review our findings, and then we'll have an opportunity for public comment on those. At the end of that, you have three or more options: adopt the findings as proposed, as written, adopt as amended based on public comment or other discussion, or not adopt at all. So, if I might proceed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So again, we are asking for an exemption to the contracting process for our project called Easton Ridge. As you remember, where we've had study sessions on Easton Ridge, this is a bond-financed property that the Housing Authority owns. It's 264 units of affordable housing. It's located at approximately 90th and Southeast Causey. We've identified a number of issues on the property that need to be addressed, primarily the replacement of the envelope. And we want to address some site issues such as drainage, and then also address indoor air quality and air circulation. This is all in an effort to, first of all, bring the property up to, if you will, neighborhood standards, just in terms of aesthetics, but also to address a failing product, the siding product that is now failing. The other site issues about drainage, we believe also can be addressed completely with this scope. We think that the overall scope is around $7 million at this point. That's just the hard construction component of this. During the process, we'll also be refinancing the property, pay off the existing debt, taking on new debt, just like you would refinance your home. I'm gonna just read technically through the findings that we had to proceed with the alternative CMGC, that's Construction Manager, General Contractor, Alternative Procurement Process. To move forward with this, we have to issue findings to the public saying why we want to, what's the benefit to the Housing Authority to do this alternative process? And I'll read into the record, if you will, what those are. First is that the general manager, Construction Manager, General Contractor approach will provide for an accelerated project timeline. This is because our general contractor and our architect will be working together in a team so that they can together put together a construction timeline instead of having it be an iterative process. Instead of having the architect determine the timeline and then negotiating later with the general contractor, they get to start together as a team and work it out. The second is selecting the construction methods and sequencing. So again, instead of just the architect team starting and presenting their piece to a general contractor, the two get to work together through this process to outline their process together, their timeline together, and the selection of the construction methods. Project costs can be lower or contained because of this close working relationship between the general contractor and the architects. The project may proceed more effectively because the designers and the contractors and then also members of a team that we will bring on as an owner's rep will be working together to balance each other, if you will, through that process. The Housing Authority gains the opportunity to fix the total project cost early in our process through this cooperatively with the architect and the CMGC. So the idea is that we end up with a guaranteed maximum price at the end of the process where the general contractor and the architect work together. The general contractor then bears much of the risk to make that happen at the maximum The Housing Authority's administrative burden for the project is reduced because of the solicitation process. We will only have to do one solicitation. This mitigates in case we do, you know, otherwise we would be subject to the low bid process. If the low bid comes in higher than our project budget, it delays the timeline, we have to go back out for another bid. This process allows us, again, to set a maximum price after we have been working with the general contractor and the architect team. One of the highest potential areas for claims filed by subcontractors or excessive bid costs involves issues related to perceived schedule difficulties, delays, and disruptions in the workflow. And again, bringing the team together early in this process lets us sort those, sort the schedule out together so that we can avoid those kinds of conflicts. Those are the stated findings as to why we are asking the Board for the exemption. I would ask the Board if you have questions at this point.
Questions? Mr. Savis?
My concern, and I gather this is the contract itself? I mean, it's not the contract itself, correct? Just guidelines we have before me?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
My concern about this is that if we're gonna go along with a guaranteed maximum price, that the actual final contract that's signed that guarantees that is written in such a way that any kind of a change orders are... My, I guess my overall concern, that the change order option is something that we just try not to exercise or not, or have not included in there to some degree, or some kind of a control that assures we are not going to be exposed to an overrun and go outside the guaranteed maximum. And I've been through one of these before, and the project went higher than it was. And so all the security that I was given that it would not exceed the maximum price was out the window on one change order. And that's the exposure I don't want to get into. So that's my concern about this. So is, if there is a change order or something that is gonna increase the price significantly, I'd like to see a mechanism there that comes back before the Board so we can discuss how we deal with that. I want to see this corrected and fixed, resolved, in as responsible a way as possible. And hopefully this doesn't become an open-ended or a substandard repair. I have great confidence in staff on this. My concern, though, of course, right here is literally the exposure and our ability to meet the obligation should it go above the guaranteed maximum amount.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bernard?
I guess I would also add that I would be concerned that what percentage of, over that maximum price, are you required to come to the Commission to ask for approval?
I don't know the answer to that question. And I don't know if Lane Miller, who has more experience with this process, can help us out with that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lane Miller, purchasing manager of Rutherford County. The, Commissioner Bernard, to answer your question, it would follow the same parameters that we have in place for any of our other contracts.
Is it on?
I'm sorry. It would follow the same parameters that we have for any other contract in the county compliant with our LCRB rules. That in this instance, it would be the $150,000 threshold. Anything that exceeded that value would come to the Board for approval automatically. That does not preclude us from coming to the Board with $1.50. It just allows for some efficiencies in the construction management of a construction project.
So is there contingency in this maximum price?
You mean in the budget?
Yes, in the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And what is that contingency?
Right now, we're assuming 15% contingency, but we'll negotiate that with the general contractor along the way. Also, you know, we've got a whole other side of the equation here, which is working with the lending institutions and Oregon Housing and Community Services. So, you know, they'll have benchmarks and requirements for contingency as well. So it's both what they're gonna require in contingency, what we want to do in contingency, and then what gets worked out between, you know, the architect, general contractor, and our owner's representative.
Thank you.
Other clarifying questions of staff? With that, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I do not have any cards about this item, unless I have missed them. So seeing no one coming forward to testify, I'll close the public hearing and ask the Housing Authority Board what they would like to do with this item in terms of the motion.
Adam Chair, I move we approve the request for an exemption and authorization to use the Request for Proposal method to obtain Construction Manager, General Contractor Services for the East Ridge Apartment Renovation Project as presented by staff.
And I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Damon that we approve the request for exemption and authorization for this method of construction. Is there discussion on it?
Well, I would say I really appreciate the significant amount of briefing that you've given us. I think we've had two prior briefings, or I at least have had two prior briefings, on this matter. I know that you've been working through how to deal with the fact that this important apartment building needs some capital improvements and that it's important for us to protect the value of the asset and its ability to serve the low-income families that are living there, for us to take care of the problem. So we've talked a lot about it. You've worked a lot on this, and I appreciate all that effort, and I think this is the right next step.
And I would, you want to add something?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you as well, Trell. I really appreciate the time you've put into this and the tour that I took of the facility so I could see the state that it was in. And I agree, I mean, I feel really up to speed about all the different choices and the paths, and this is the best path forward, so thank you.
And I would just say that in my experience with a number of design-build projects in the city of Wilsonville, my experience was entirely different than Commissioner Savis'. It was the way that we reduced the number of change orders. It was a way to, in every case, it worked out to our benefit, and there were less conflicts and less delays, more coordination, certainly less liability, if you will, between the two, with the people responsible for the design and the people responsible for the build, where otherwise you get a lot of blaming and many more change orders than you have in a design build. It always worked out very well on very large projects, 50, 60 million dollar projects. Anyway, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
And with that, we do not have any discussion items scheduled today, so that brings us to citizen communication. And I see there are many people signed up for citizen communication. I can't quite figure it, but anyway, I wanted to, since citizen communication last week, a number of concerns have been raised, or people have asked questions of me or other people that have filtered to us. And in particular, I thought I would ask County Council to address the issue of Commissioner advocacy on the dais and what is appropriate or inappropriate. Mr. Madcor.
Yes, thank you, Chair Leehan. Stephen Madcor, County Council. And an elected official is, it's inherent in the position of an elected official, if not inherent. It's certainly expected as well that he or she will be given an opportunity to express an opinion, to advocate on behalf of a certain cause, a certain position, whatever it might be. The law regarding that provides for these elected officials on the Board, our other elected officials, be it the treasurer, the sheriff, the assessor, to advocate on a matter of public concern, of county concern. And they can do it on county property. They can do it from their telephone on county property. They can do it through their email. It doesn't regulate the use of the facility itself. The statute in Oregon concerning elections regulates the use of public employees in the expression of that advocacy message. Last week, for an example, there were some positions taken in Commissioner comments that were deemed to be advocacy. Those matters were allowed live on the broadcast, they were allowed live on the dais, they were not allowed live or replayed, rebroadcast on the county's cable network system. Because to do so would involve the use of public employees for the rebroadcasting of advocacy material on a matter that's coming up on the November election. That is something that would implicate the public employee, and that would implicate the public employees involved with the rebroadcast, the cable group, and other folks along those lines. So that commentary was muted. It is available for public access at all county libraries, the unreadacted version of it. But the law certainly does allow and expects elected officials to be able to opine on matters of county concern or even personal concern from the dais or really anywhere else.
And...
Any questions?
I would say, in my background, long political background on the dais, we were, we were always told the electeds can say any fool thing. The staff are constrained, but electeds can say pretty much any fool thing because they're the ones who are elected to say things, brilliant or otherwise. So just to clarify that. And so with that, we will, we will proceed to citizen comment, and we'll, I will call people up two at a time, and we will do three minutes and give your, give your name and address when you come up. And the first, the first two I have are Libby Wentz and Jim Greenman. And I'll, and I'll tell you on deck. So then I'll have on deck, the next two will be Susan Drew and Eric Saab.
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name's Libby Wentz, and I've lived in Gladstone, Oregon since 1996. I resent the Board of County Commissioners plotting the convoluted Measure 3388 on my dime with the sole intent of trumping the people's Measure 3386. I was appalled when I listened to you laughing with glee at how clever you were to craft a measure which will trump ours if they are both approved, laughing at us, captured on audio and available for us to listen to on your website. I resent the Board of County Commissioners employing the skills of Portland Political Action Committee with the misleading name of "require local vote on urban renewal." The same PAC from Portland, which campaigned against the people of Clackamas in May to dupe us about the Selwood Bridge, the misnomer they used that election was Clackamas County Citizens for Jobs and Safety. I resent you misleading my neighbors into thinking the only reason 3386 is on the ballot is because of paid signature gatherers, after I and many, many other Clackamas County residents spent thousands of man-hours to make 3386 a reality, while your puppet master spent over $300,000 of union dues and contributions from out-of-county entities to try to defeat us in May and again this election. Why are you so intent on confusing the voters in Clackamas County? Why are you trying to instill division amongst residents of Clackamas County when 3386 is not about us versus them at all?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Greenman. I live at 19751 South Ferguson Terrace in Oregon City. I appear before you as a 30-year Clackamas County resident, property taxpayer, and a small business owner. When the Commission acts to spend taxpayer money, we taxpayers have had an indirect voice in that expenditure because at least we had an opportunity to vote for the individuals forming Commission. Under Measure 3388, a small assembly of unelected persons will be given the power to spend our money, leaving the rest of us with absolutely no say in the matter. Given that, it seems to me that Measure 3388 is a personification of taxation without representation. Thank you.
Yeah.
The mayor of Damascus is here. We didn't have him in the front. We usually let electeds go first.
Okay. Let's see.
Hello?
Well, hold on just a second. So the next on deck will be Steve Spinnett and Herb Cost as the next two up and off. And go ahead.
Hello. My name is Susan Drew. My address is 37770 Highway 26 in Sandy. I'm a property taxpayer, a property owner, and I just wanted to say I am a supporter of 3-388 because I do not believe that this is incurring any kind of a countywide debt. When I get my property tax bill, I have a little urban renewal part that's part of what I pay, and that is what's going on in Sandy. And it's my understanding, nobody else in the rest of, nobody outside of Sandy pays any of that at all, doesn't incur a debt. And I resent having to drive around, on my drive down here, to see these great big false billboards that say, talk about incurring a countywide debt, when I view that to be a bald-faced lie. And I, I think when an urban renewal area is created, only money from within that district is used to pay for projects that take place within that district. And urban renewal creates a local obligation, not a countywide obligation. And it's very disturbing that the people from outside of Clackamas County that I believe are funding this have the wherewithal to create these gigantic billboards that are promulgating this false notion of a countywide debt. That's why local voting and local control is, makes sense. I am very happy that the County Commissioners took the action of creating Measure 3-388 in order that we have this option to support local control for local residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, County Commissioners. My name is Eric Saab. I live at 16660 Southeast Sunridge Lane in Milwaukee. I enjoyed speaking to you last week about leadership and value. I'm here today to talk about 3-388. I want to speak on facts and not my opinions, and with facts, I have actually included documentation and research which is verifiable and available to the Commissioners and anybody else who asks. First, 3-388 is only on the ballot because you want to undermine Clackamas County voters. If you disagree with 3-388, as the lady sitting next to me, you certainly have the option to. And you certainly can vote no on it. You certainly can advocate for other people to vote no on it. But putting two ballot measures on the ballot side by side that says if one wins, we trump the other undermines democracy. I understand that we are a republic and not a democracy, but we certainly employ elements of democracy such as county votes. The idea that redirecting funds from a Sandy urban renewal that would otherwise go to Clackamas County to instead fund Sandy urban renewal puts a higher tax burden on every other county taxpayer. Therefore, it costs every county taxpayer. You guys are here to represent the county, not out-of-state funds, not out-of-county groups, as an email went out to your supporters. And some things that I would like to point out, 67.94% of all the money you guys raised for 3-388 comes from outside of Clackamas County. $17,000 of it comes from out of the state of Oregon. It doesn't make any sense to me. The whole idea about it being local, quite frankly, bluntly, and direct, is BS. It's absolutely insane. You guys say it's about local control? The same board who says local, let's put a measure on the ballot to take Clackamas County funds and pay for a bridge that says right on top of it, "built and maintained by Multnomah County." You guys don't care about local. The transit district, the Milwaukee Light Rail, this agrees with me if you may, but you want to take a whole entire county, fund something where you don't even put it on the ballot, you don't even have a budget sheet for it. It's insane. And about saving money, the same Commissioners who spent our tax dollars to advocate that a judge said was unlawful, and you guys had to pay back for Measures 66 and 67, both of which failed in Clackamas County. Thank you.
So I will call up Steve Spinnett. Sorry, I missed your, missed your, missed you, because we usually call electeds first.
That's okay. That's okay. I'm Steve Spinnett, and I'm the mayor of Damascus, and we've had some, and I want to, I want to thank you for allowing me to come up here, Chair and Commission. We've had a little experience with, at our little local level, with measures and competing measures. There's been four competing measures, and they all went down very significantly. I've been getting phone calls, soon as the voters, voter thing was sent out in the mail, people started calling me, and I hadn't opened my mail yet, and they were absolutely confused, especially on 386 and 388, the difference between the two and what they meant. And so I had, I went to the voters pamphlet and reread it. I had already read it, and I was confused. And so I had to get on the phone and get, get on the email and to really be clear on this. The problem that I had, and I'm clear on it now, of course, and so I'm now able to tell my constituents that call me because they don't know who my constituents that call me because they don't know who else to call. They're misled. 388, in my opinion, has been formed and crafted to mislead the public. It's that simple. Mislead the public through confusion. It's not clear. It doesn't state with clarity what it does and doesn't do. 386 could be clearer, but, so that is something, even if 388 won, it would cause more dissension in the community because people will find out about 388, whether it wins or loses, especially if it wins, after the fact. And the cleanup that it would require to gain confidence in the community probably would not be possible. So the damage control would be massive if it passes. So I want to just encourage Commissioners to really be forthright with clarity and communicate between now and election what each measure does, that you remove all confusion and make it very clear. We've seen this at our little local level and the trust that has been lost through, even a few years ago, the competing measures, I don't think our current council, who by and large is still the council, has regained that trust. So that's what I have to say and thank you.
Thank you. Herb Koss.
Good morning. And thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning. My name's Herb Koss and I live at 2643 South Shore, Lake Oswego. I was very concerned basically about Measure 3-386 when it was first put on the ballot and I thank you for putting 3-388 on the ballot. Measure 388 gives local control to urban renewal. Measure 388 is a job creator which is desperately needed in Clackamas County. It's unfortunate that many voters do not understand the positive impacts of urban renewal and its many benefits. Without urban renewal, projects like Government Camp would not occur. I would encourage all voters to read the Voters' Pamphlet and read Jonathan Schluter's comments, who is the Executive Director of the Westside Economic Alliance. It can be found on page 36 of the Voters' Pamphlet. This shows the positive benefits that Washington County received and the same could occur in Clackamas County. Clackamas County needs family wage jobs and urban renewal is a very important tool to achieve this goal. Again, it's page 36 of the Voters' Pamphlet. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Herb. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get some on decks. The next two up are George Curtis and Chips Janger.
My name is George Curtis. I live at 13970 Southeast Rustway in Damascus. I personally find the Commissioners' attempt to subvert the will of the people in being heard on 386 by coming up with this confusing second one with a poison pill in there to wipe out 386, even if it had 100% of the vote approval, and you come up with 50.1%. I don't see it talked about very often. It seems to be it's quite secret. I think you all were elected to serve the people of the whole county. And when I hear of what you're really serving is your own personal interest or the interest of others for a small portion of the county and you want the whole county to pay for it. We all know how most things turn out as far as urban renewal or any other government program. They almost always have massive cost overrun, which nobody saw coming until it happens. I think personally, most of you should be ashamed of yourself for the way you've acted in this case. That's it, I'm done.
My name is Chips Janger. I live at 14068 Southeast Fair Oaks Avenue in Oak Grove. I live in the place where we're talking about this hopefully will take place. I want to really personally thank all the Commissioners for allowing the people who live in Oak Grove, who are talking about finding a way to take a terribly degraded area along the Glaughlin Boulevard, something that no one in the county is proud of, no one in the entire metro area is proud of, and finding a way to try to do something about it and giving control over the people who live in this area and who've been working very hard there for the last several years to find a way to do something about this area, giving us the opportunity to vote, to be able to see if we can do something about it ourselves. To get here this morning, I had to drive from Oak Grove through Oregon City. Oregon City has had opportunities to have urban renewal. In Oak Grove, we don't have an opportunity to vote for that because we don't live here. But 386 allows people in Oregon City to vote for a project that's going to take place in Oak Grove. Doesn't really seem right. That certainly doesn't seem fair. What I wanted to do is just to express to the Commissioners here what has been taking place during the last two to three years since we started really planning for the possibility to have something happen in this area where I live. I've never seen such citizen involvement. People are very excited about the possibility of taking this terribly degraded area and doing something about it. We have all kinds of initiatives. We have citizens' initiatives taking place. We have people that are drawing up plans, talking about what could possibly happen there, talking about all the things that could happen from the light rail station that will take place there to begin the redevelopment of an area which hopefully our entire county can be proud of. I want to thank you. I know it's difficult. It's a difficult thing that you guys are going through, but you are giving us the opportunity to be able to be in control of our own destiny, that little group right there, like many of the cities have. We think it's only fair and we want to thank you for it.
Thank you. The next two I have are Cindy Lewis-Walfrum and Justin Wood, and after that Dale Seal
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Justin Wood and I work with the Portland Home Builders Association and I do want to testify here in support of Measure 3-388. Contrary to what some of the people in the audience may think, the Home Builders Association, we did endorse 3-388, but we don't stand to really gain a whole lot out of it. We build homes and we don't build a lot of the infrastructure that goes into the urban renewal areas. That said, urban renewal areas provide key infrastructure that allows development and redevelopment, that allows growth, prosperity, and jobs in Clackamas County, all of which we need. There have been some problems that some people have pointed out with past urban renewal districts, but I feel that the measures that you came up with to address some of those issues took care of hopefully future problems that might happen with any urban renewal districts. Having a countywide urban renewal vote is too important, I mean is too difficult to ever pass due to the cost that it'd be required to do a vote across the county and it's too important for the local areas that need that vote or need that district to place that in the countywide vote. It really should be placed in the hands of the people that are going to benefit most directly from that district. I've also heard several people talk about wanting to make the decisions and how each tax dollar is spent. And while this may not be the position of everybody at the HBA, at least in my opinion, is that's part of the reason we elect you guys to do a lot of those things. If people don't like decisions the Commissioners make, then you have the right to change your Commissioners. But the point of the reason of electing you guys is to make a lot of these smaller decisions and a lot of the complex, important decisions which I feel urban renewal districts are. Also, urban renewal is an investment in the future of the area. When people talk about the cost, what people aren't looking at and aren't realizing is what the county is getting back at the end of the urban renewal district. I know there's lots of examples like Clackamas Town Center and the Government Camp Village area that show that yes, there was some initial outlay by the county, but that the county stands to gain quite a bit more from that back once the urban renewal district is passed and that doesn't even take into consideration all the jobs and what it did for the local economy. So just in closing, I want to support 3-388.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Lewis-Walfrum, 6686 Southeast Montego Bay Street in Milwaukee. I'm here for two reasons today. I thought I'd take care of the short one first. It's not your responsibility as Commissioners here, but as been noted in the newspapers lately, there's several voting materials that are not getting out, not just to the Oak Grove area, but the people in my CPO, NCCA, have also had missing voting materials. It needs to be addressed and needs to be addressed quickly, especially when issues like 3386 and 3388 are on the ballot. Mayor Spinnett from Damascus said that this is a confusing issue. It really isn't. It's an issue between our neighbors controlling all of us or the local citizenry controlling their destiny. Measure 3386 takes it into an unfriendly area that I don't think Clackamas County is in. I don't know of too many neighbors here in Clackamas County who want to butt into their neighbor's business. They're busy enough with their own, especially in this economy. 3388 is a measure that is going to allow the local area citizenry to make the decisions that are going to affect those citizens. And I think it's very important and I thank you for making sure that that issue was addressed by placing this measure on the ballot. I've heard today a couple of people say things about trying to undermine the citizen's right to vote and a poison pill. These measures are very clear and very easy to understand. In fact, I was talking to several of the citizens of NCCA area, and by the way, for those of you who don't know where that is, that's kind of between Oak Grove and Clackamas. We're a little tiny CPO, but we do want to have some control over what happens in our area. Unlike what's going on right now, decisions are made by everybody but us. In fact, every time a decision seems to get made, we kind of feel like the little lost stepsister. And that needs to be addressed and 3388 addresses it. I want to thank you for the time to come and talk to you about this because not everybody can get up, leave their jobs, leave their children, and do this. And it's important that our citizens realize that we have to vote on this because of there only being a few of us that can talk about it. 3388 will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two are Dale Seal and Jonathan Schluter and on deck are Mary Ann Moore and Charles Ormsby.
I'm here at Clackamas County, live in Happy Valley. Lived Clackamas County for the last 40 years, or like I should say, 40, over the last 42 years I've lived here in Clackamas County. And I'm here today to support 386 and talk about 388, which is the measure put on the Commissioners, by the Commissioners and in a work session, the people that supported 388 were laughed at. And I'm here also today in response to a letter that went out that I'm told by the source, it's from Ann, Ann's name on it, and it's apparently gone from laughing at us to smearing us because the supporters, the recipients of this letter, were given some talking points. And of the talking points were, "What about out-of-state interests such as Americans for Prosperity that spent $10,000 to put this on the ballot?" "They're extremists," is another comment made here. Let me give a few facts here. We did a spreadsheet this morning. It should be posted on savewoogrove.com and you can type in ORTEM to get to, because there's a lot of Oak Groves across the United States, but this one is ORTEM, which is Metro spelled backwards. This spreadsheet will be posted. Of the money that so far has been spent by the Measure 388 proponents, according to the initial figures, we have $77,000 total spent. $75,000 has been spent from outside of Clackamas County. It's kind of who's who of who pays to play here in Clackamas County. Most of them, of course, are from Portland. I want to set the record straight, Clackamas AFP, the group I represent, although in this room, there are many different people from many different groups, varied, and most, every single one of them are local here, Clackamas taxpayers, who've lived here most all their lives. Some have been involved politically before, others, it's their first time. I'll give you one example of a new one that's come just today. Angela, Angela, this will be the first election that she will have voted and it will be here in Clackamas County. She came from Vietnam. She's very thankful to have the opportunity to vote for accountable government because she has not had that opportunity coming from the country of Vietnam. And I want everyone here to realize that we represent what is accountable government. It's not a government that wants to trump the citizens by putting a competing measure on the ballot when they could have just done a resolution. And that excludes Mr. Paul Savis and we're very grateful for Paul for standing up for the citizens and voting no on this measure. But smearing the residents who are from Clackamas County when they're represented as being out of the county and receiving money from out of the county. Of the $10,000 supposed, let's say we use that figure that was spent to put this on the ballot, of that, most of that came from a local firefighters' union. And plus, everyone knows, because of groups like Onward Oregon and our Oregon, it makes it very difficult to qualify a measure for the ballot because many of the signatures are thrown out because of these groups that say they're for democracy, but they actually oppose democracy because they make it very difficult to raise, get signatures for the ballot and my time's up. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Council President Leon, Members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Jonathan Schluter. I'm the Executive Director of Westside Economic Alliance. Most of you know from previous testimony that Westside Economic Alliance is a business advocacy organization serving Washington and western Clackamas Counties. So by that description, I represent folks inside the urban growth boundary, outside the urban growth boundary, in Washington County, in Clackamas County. We're quite agnostic as long as people are working, as long as payrolls are being served. My message to you last month in these chambers was that Clackamas County has some work to do. At that time, I was explaining that Clackamas County employers had shed 900 employees in the past year. The data that I've just provided you that was updated Monday of this week brings you the cheerier news that you have actually added 400 jobs in the last year. Congratulations, it's the right trend to go. But please compare Clackamas County's job growth of 400 to neighboring Washington County and our increase of 3,000 jobs in the same period and neighboring Multnomah County having increased 3,800 jobs in the same period of time. Clackamas County cannot unilaterally disarm its economic development tool walks. And urban renewal funding and tax increment financing is a vital tool and component for urban renewal and economic development. I also explained last month that of the 135,000 people in Clackamas County who are actively engaged in the workforce, 60% of them got up this morning and left your county to go find work elsewhere. Three of every five working people in Clackamas County left Clackamas County for those employment opportunities. And I offered that you are not the bedroom community of our region. You need to have economic development opportunities and you need to promote job growth in Clackamas County. Give us that opportunity, allow me to do that job. With passage of 388 and local control of local urban renewal, tax increment financing opportunities, we have those chances and we have those resources and we will make that happen. Clackamas County is better than this. We have much better opportunities ahead of us. And you want to give your residents, now 18,000 of your neighbors and your constituents who are unemployed at this moment, you owe it to those residents and those constituents. who are unemployed at this moment, you owe it to those residents and those constituents to get back to work. Passage of 388 will let us do our jobs. Let's get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two I have up are Mary Ann Moore and Charles Ormsby, and on deck I have Steve Winkler and Myrna Hester. Hester, I think.
I'm Mary Ann Moore. I live at 18340 Cornell Place in Gladstone, Oregon. We moved to Milwaukee when I was four, so I've been in Clackamas County for 72 years. And I grew up with streetcars. And I think that a lot of this came about because you were pushing through the light rail against, two votes against it, and not taking a vote on it for the current plan you have. And I did work on gathering signatures, nobody was paying us. I have just returned from being abroad and catching up with things this week. And one of the things that came to my attention is, this is a map of Clackamas, excuse me, this is a map of Clackamas County. You can see all the white, that's the unincorporated area. The cities that you're talking about, that can vote on things and take over, are a very small amount of it. And my problem is that you put this through basically without a vote, but even if Milwaukee had voted on it, all of us are paying for it, because you've offered $25 million for the Tri-Mant Light Rail. And that's my money that's not in Milwaukee, and it's not in Oak Grove. This is outside of the realm of where the light rail was intended to be in the Milwaukee area. And I just came across, too, catching up with things, that there's a whole plan now for development around the light rail stop that's planned for Park Place. Several million dollars to put in low-income housing, and those people are not getting any vote on this. And I assume that this means you're going to use eminent domain to take over their properties and do this. I think we need some votes, and since the whole county's going to be paying for these things, I think they should have a right to vote on them. And I have seen this in today's paper as well, and I hope people are knowing the difference between the two. Apparently, from some of the editorials, people don't understand. One person had recommended voting for both of them, so that they could split the vote. They don't understand that yours is going to take precedence over the other one if they both pass. And I just want to remind you that Clackamas County, we want, we put out, citizens brought forth 3886, and you're trying to override it, which I think is of shame and a disgrace.
My name is Charles Ormsby. I live in Clackamas County at 170 Southwest Birds Hill Road, and the address is Portland, Oregon, 97219-8502. I'm here on, wearing two hats today. One is for my CPONA, which is referred to as the Birds Hill CPONA, a joint Clackamas County Community Planning Organization, Lake Oswego Neighborhood Association, and then my own personal comments. Last night, we had a CPONA meeting. We had about 10 people there, eight, 10 people, and we were discussing a multitude of issues. We passed a couple resolutions. And most importantly, one of them is requesting that all law enforcement entities, including DA's office, associated with wherever the Lake Oswego to Portland Transit Project is, become voting members or get recognition as project partners in the Lake Oswego to Portland Transit Project. We're not happy with the current state of affairs of the system of law enforcement and deterrence, and how that's been discussed, presented, and where it is. The resolution packets will be transmitted to you probably within about a week to two weeks. Another issue was the, is the issue of traffic mitigation of Foothills District coming into our area. New interchange has been proposed at Oregon Highway 43 and Tulager Boulevard. Tulager Boulevard at that point is a Clackamas County road. We are hyper-concerned. So, and those will be forthcoming to you in the near future, probably with about 15 others that were passed in June. But all of these dovetail with the aspect and the issue of the urban renewal initiatives. My own personal opinion, not reflecting those of the members of my CPO, is that I'm supporting measures 3-386, and I'm voting no on 3-388. Primarily because the citizens at this time in junction in the United States are evolving a new right, and that is the right to vote on debt. And the debt encumbrances from urban renewal are not concentrated in one specific area. They are distributed throughout the county by clauses in the bond instruments, most notably the full faith and credit clauses that would be sold, so you can get an extra two points off the bond issue. This is of concern, so the debt is spread countywide, or the liability for that debt. This is scary. We don't know what the debt load of Clackamas County is, and we don't know what the credit limit of Clackamas County is when projects are discussed and presented to us, either on a municipal level, such as in Lake Oswego, regarding the Foothills District, regarding the streetcar extension, or on the county level regarding their contributions. We are getting scared. Thank you.
The next two up are Steve Winkler and Myrna Hester. But before we get there, I was going to ask, you can go ahead and come sit down, but I'm going to ask County Council to clarify the language, since there seems to be confusion on the issue of which measure would take effect when, or what, because one does not, 388 does not trump the 386, unless it gets more votes. But if you could clarify how those are.
Yes, Chair Leahen, the measure that receives the most votes will be the controlling measure. Period.
There's, yeah, there's no trickery to it. The one that gets the most votes is the one that takes effect.
Correct.
So, either way.
That was not, that was not what was decided on.
That was in July.
That was, that was a discussion, and it was dismissed. That's part of the problem of taking things out of context, but we did not move in that direction. There was some staff discussion around that possibility, and the Commission chose not to go in that direction, so. I just wanted to clarify, so that we're not, because multiple different messages have been popping up about that issue. I'm going to go ahead with the people who are up, because they've been waiting. You can't speak from the audience, because you can't be recorded. So, I'm not sure which one was up first, Steve Winkler, Myrna Hester. Flip a coin.
Yes, my name is Steve Winkler, I'm from Sandy, Oregon. First of all, I'm a little ashamed of some of the testimony that's been given that impugns the integrity of the Commissioners. I respect the Commissioners, I will not refer to them as you guys, but as Commissioners, and I believe you were elected to represent us, and I resent the implication that you have a private agenda to pursue, and not an agenda to pursue the welfare of everybody here. Now, having said that, I am a hard supporter of Measure 388. I think there's been a welter of misinformation concerning that measure. I think most of the misinformation stems directly or indirectly from a prevailing notion rooted around the whole anti-tax philosophy that has been given such wide circulation. And government is run by measures that promote the welfare of the people. I'm thinking specifically, I was so disturbed and frightened by the fact that the Solwood Bridge measure went down. I think that is a reflection of a lot of misinformation concerning people who thought that that would be raised because of the passage of that bridge. That bridge, as probably a lot of you know, is in such a state of gross disrepair that it was raided by many civil engineers as in worse condition than the Minnesota Bridge that collapsed some years ago. I think Measure 388, which I again ardently support, gives people a choice to vote for measures like that, that reflect the safety and well-being of all of our people, not just the people across that bridge. But basically, again, not to repeat myself, there's been a lot of misinformation, a lot of misinformation is rooted around anti-tax philosophy, and I think Measure 388 is really a reflection of what our republic stands for. People who are affected by measures having a voice in their passage. So I urge everyone to really not be swayed by the misinformation, but to really read the information, and if they do that, I'm convinced that they will vote for Measure 388. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Myrna Hester. I live at 20691 South Highway 213 in Oregon City. I'm simply a Clackamas County resident. I have not paid by some quote "out-of-state interest group" for my testimony here. I'm one of your constituents, a person whose interest you are supposed to represent. I am not an interested party from outside of Clackamas County who happens to have a financial or ideological dog in this hunt, we refer to as urban renewal. My interest is simply one of what is best for Clackamas County residents. Judging from the visitors testifying today from outside of Clackamas County at the invitation of at least one of the Commissioners, I'm concerned that you have lost sight of the concept of constituency representation. I ask therefore, why have they been invited? What stake do they hold, other than the possibility of financial gain at the expense of county residents, or to advance an ideological agenda favored by most but not all of the Commissioners, regardless of what the county's residents might desire? Since funding for the county's budget has its source in property taxes extracted from its citizenry, it only makes sense that the Commissioners elected by that same citizenry have a fiduciary as well as a representative responsibility to those folks. Yet when those same citizens offered up a proposal, namely 3386, which not only allows but also encourages voters to participate in the democratic process, the majority of the Commissioners saw fit to obfuscate the issue by including a competing measure of their own, a measure I might add that even a judge ruled to be confusing. Do the Commissioners consider themselves so superior to their constituents that they believe they should do the thinking for them? Do you not believe the citizens of Clackamas County capable of voting intelligently on matters involving the prudent disposition of a portion of their tax funding? The actions of this Commission, save one, indicate so. Your measure, if passed, will allow a small portion of the county's residents to decide the disposition of funds procured from the entire county. On its face, that is counter-democratic. Obviously, if offered, a small minority of folks would be happy to vote themselves a benefit at the expense of the rest of us. Yet that is exactly what your measure does. Why would you propose such a measure if not to thwart the will of a constituency that might just vote a response contrary to your own agendas? What swathe have those guests you've invited from outside of our county have over you that you would choose to serve their will rather than ours?
Thank you. The next two I have are Kim Parker and Mac Woods, and on deck I have Nancy Hall and Fred
Good morning, I'm Kim Parker. I live in Canby, Oregon, Clackamas County. I'm also the Executive Director of the Clackamas County Business Alliance, which, as you know, has endorsed Measure 3388. And you heard earlier today from another business alliance, the Westside Economic Alliance, which has also endorsed it, along with the Portland Business Alliance. All of these business representatives support the reasonable use of urban renewal and recognize how having urban renewal in the toolbox brings economic vitality to a community. The Clackamas County Business Alliance members support Measure 3388 because they have experienced how urban renewal works well. Companies like Pioneer Pump, Marks Metals Technologies, Oregon Iron Works, these are all manufacturers in Clackamas County who employ people who work in family wage jobs. They support responsible urban renewal. We need to listen to them. We are at a turning point in our county. Clackamas County absolutely needs to set policy and make decisions that create jobs and spur economic development. Urban renewal generates job creation opportunities, which we desperately need, as Jonathan Schluter pointed out earlier in his testimony, and increases economic development. Asking local voters to weigh in on local decisions can help us all accomplish this goal for the county and the region. Businesses support urban renewal, Measure 3388. Businesses that create jobs. We need to listen to these people, and we need to vote yes on Measure 3388 and no on Measure 3386. Thank you.
I'm Mac Woods, 11677 South Maxburg Road in Canby. I'm a business owner, a property owner, I pay a lot of cotton picking taxes, and I want you to know it's us that's paying for these things that everybody's rooting for, sounds like you're rooting for, jobs. For goodness sakes, think about it. Do you want to help pay my expenses out of your own pocket? Because that's exactly what you're doing to the people that's paying for this. The jobs are a good thing, I grant, I give you credit for that, but look at who's paying for it. It's the property tax people. There's not a question of confusing to me. Anybody that don't have enough common sense and brains to think about it and look about it, and anybody that come up with this bill, you did it on the 11th hour after you realized a few of us got together and put out the efforts, along with working full-time, to go out and gather enough petitions, and you get out of bed in the morning in a hurry to get this 388 garbage on the bill, so you can defeat us. What is your purpose, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, excluding this one gentleman that seems to understand it? And I'm surprised, Mr. Bernard, that you look at him. It's you that's created this mess. So think about us, the ones that's voting for you, and I'll guarantee you, people in the public, I want you to watch on the video and see, look at yourself and see what people say. Understand it, it's like a rubber band, and you're trying to pull away from us. That makes us pull harder to defend what is right. It's a no-brainer, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a farm kid, I don't have any college, but I got common sense. I wish the people that put in these measures together would use a little common sense. Honesty is an important thing. Aside from respect, we respect your position, particularly Mr. Savis, that turned the eagle in the right direction facing the crowd on the last meeting. It's a no-brainer, common sense. Think of the people that put you in this position, these seats. I'm talking off the top of my head again, I'd really like to talk to you one-on-one. Any one of you are welcome. Please call me. I'll challenge you to call me, and we'll talk about common sense and who's paying for this. Do you want to help pay for my salary? I'd love to get into your pocketbook, but I'd like for you to stop getting into mine. Thank you.
Okay, the next ones I have up are, what did I say, Nancy Hall and Fred Nelligan, and on deck are Carla Plutka and Jerry Turner.
I'm Nancy Hall, and I live in Happy Valley. Last week, the county tax assessor testified that revenues were down. The county- These are tough times. Despite this, the county is still pursuing building the Milwaukee Light Rail. I am a reasonably aware Clackamas County citizen. I have seen articles about Milwaukee Light Rail that discuss design issues and that the approximate cost to the taxpayer would be $25 million. However, I have not seen or heard one reference as to how the project is to be financed. Yet the project is proceeding with financing apparently as a mere afterthought. How does the county plan to pay for Milwaukee Light Rail? The voters repealed the vehicle registration tax that was ostensibly to fund the Selwood Bridge. The county has declared that urban renewal will not be used to fund light rail. That leaves taking money from the general fund or a special tax increase. We need the county to tighten its belt. The Milwaukee Light Rail pet project would obviously raid from diminishing revenues and take away from essential services and further burden strapped taxpayers with a $25 million or more tax liability that we can't afford. At last week's business meeting, I observed citizens asking questions of the board and the board refusing to answer. It was obvious this wasn't their first attempt to get answers to their questions. One person testified that they were told someone would get back to them, and no one did. Where is the service and accountability to the public? Chair Leehan, you are the CEO of Clackamas County, and you should know the answer to the following question that has been asked repeatedly. When will the issue of funding for Milwaukee Light Rail be put on the business agenda? Stop stonewalling the public. We have the right to an answer.
Mr. Nelligan.
Chair Leehan, commissioners. My name is Fred Nelligan. I live in Oak Grove. And I am here today to speak on behalf of, in support of Measure 388. My belief is that this country, for the last 10 years, has been living in a culture of fear, a state of fear. And I believe where we are here today in Clackamas County reflects that fear, fear of the future, fear of loss. My fear is the fear of Clackamas County losing its economic viability and a sustainable future for all of our future generations that we want to live here and work here in Clackamas County. As someone who has seen, I saw the direct impacts of 9/11, I understand how this country experienced a huge wake-up call. We have poured trillions of dollars into defending this country over the last 10 years, and so much of it has come at the expense of taking care of our own communities, our own infrastructure. I believe honestly that a lot of where we are at today is a reflection of being fearful. And so I think giving the voters in areas that, right now, do not have a vote on the economic development and opportunities and growth for their communities, I think, is the most important thing that we can do today. And I do believe that a countywide vote measure would be analogous to allowing all of the counties of Oregon to vote on a specific project that is resident here only in Clackamas County. It would be analogous to Medford or Eugene giving the thumbs up or a thumbs down, or, dare I say, the city of Portland voters giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down on some project here unique to Clackamas County. It doesn't make any sense. It's not fair. It's not just. So, thank you. So I do support Measure 388.
Thank you. Next up are Carla Pletka and Jerry Turner. And on deck are Eugene Schoenheit and Mike Litt.
My name is Carla Pletka, and I live at 13545 Southeast Beach Street in Milwaukee. And I'd like to thank you for your time, commissioners. No one has said here anything about the fact that 3, I am for 386, but no one has said that 386 actually does not prevent urban renewal. Nobody's saying that. We want urban renewal. Our area needs it. I live right in the middle of lap dance land and car lots down on McLaughlin Boulevard. But I just want to say that I want voters to be able to say how their tax money is spent, or diverted, or bonded, or whatever you do with it. And having a vote may cost more due to processing more ballots and stuff. That's, you know, that's part of living in a free democracy. And, you know, I'd just rather spend the money to preserve my opportunity and everybody else's opportunity in the county to vote on things that are going to affect them. Another positive thing with 386 is that this would force the county to be selective on which issues it chooses to submit to the voters, and this would ultimately reduce the issues being presented, which would also save the taxpayers' money. Because you would probably not want to go to the voters every time, as it stated, that you'd have, you know, you'd have to be more careful about what you present to us. And as far as urban renewal, I'd like to see you guys spend time, I'm sorry, I said you guys, commissioners, to spend more time looking at ways to possibly reduce fees and finding more amenable ways for people down in that area to help improve their businesses, you know, get rid of permits, or not get rid of them, reduce them, but just find ways, things that are inhibiting people to come into that area right now, or people that have businesses, maybe they need to upgrade their buildings or something to that effect. As far as businesses being so much better in Washington County, I have no doubt that businesses are better. There's more jobs in Washington County. Washington County has SolarWorld. That's a German-based company, and they're getting federal subsidies for their products. Intel has brought on a huge new building that they're working on, bringing in lots of businesses. So you can't really compare, that's not apples to apples, that's apples to oranges. It's a whole different situation over in Washington County. Anyway, I am for 386. I am for urban renewal. 386 does not stop urban renewal. It just gives people throughout the county, who will be affected, to have a say in what's going on. Thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I think it's wonderful that we live in a country where people can have dissimilar views and debate them openly. I was born, I'm Jerry Turner. I was born in the old Oregon City Hospital. I live at 19175 South Elder Tree Court in Oregon City. I grew up in the Malino, Malala area, and graduated from Malala High School, graduated from Clackamas Community College, and graduated from Portland State. Thirteen years ago, I had the opportunity, living in this wonderful country, to start my own business. I have over 90 employees now. And fortunately, the people in Canby had the foresight to put in the new industrial park. And that's where I moved my business after about a year, or, excuse me, I moved it to Canby after about a year. And about five years ago, I built four acres, bought four and a half acres in the industrial park and built Pioneer Pump. We have businesses, I have two other businesses, one in Europe, one in South Africa. And I've been allowed to provide living wage jobs for over 90 people in the Canby area. And I really feel if we didn't, we have these two measures, so it's great that we have the opportunity to have a choice. And I really feel that, you know, whichever one you're for and whichever one you vote for, that we have a great company that'll, or country that allows us to vote for whichever measure is most deeply rooted in our heart. I am for 3388. I provided $2,500 to help pass that measure. I think if the people on 3386, I think it does limit the ability for urban renewal. I think that somebody up in Sandy wouldn't have voted for an urban renewal district in Canby. Why would they? So I'm very much in favor of having local representation and local people voting on local issues. I think there's a couple of other things I'd like to make point on. One is, The Oregonian has an article that they came out with called "The Right Choice for Growth." The Gresham Outlook, "Reject Measure 386, Pass Measure 388." And the Clackamas Review, "Measure 388 is by far the better choice for Clackamas voters." And so I'm very strongly encouraging people to vote for 388. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two I have up are Eugene Schoenheit and Mike Litt.
I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Eugene Schoenheit, 13780 Southeast Fern Ridge, basically Oldfield Bridge. I'm here to talk, ask you a couple of questions. And, you know, as commissioners, you're, you know, you're here to represent all of Clackamas County. And basically, what you've done is, when you put this Measure 388 on the ballot, what you've done is you're creating a special class of citizens, you know, that have the authority to vote, but yet the whole county has to pay for it. And, you know, that's the point. This is why what you're doing, if you're not, you know, if you're going to represent the people, you're going exactly against representing the people. I want to make another point, too, that the cities have the right to form their own urban renewal districts. Yet they do end up paying county taxes, and they do end up paying for this, but that's a point that's been overlooked. And last night, I was reading the expense report for the required vote on urban renewal, the PAC that you're using. And it's interesting that county commissioners, you carry, you put, you put on these little symbols that say "jobs" in Clackamas County. Well, it's interesting that this PAC has spent seven, according to the Secretary of State, has spent $77,000 to pass the measure, yet $75,000 was spent outside of Clackamas County. So, I mean, you know, are you promoting jobs in Clackamas County? No. Thank you.
My name is Mike Litt. I live at 92 Weatherstone Place in Lake Oswego. I'm here to support 3-388 and against 3-386. As I understand it, the way urban renewal works is that it redirects taxes that are already being collected, or had already been collected, and then it urban renewal district to a different purpose. Those taxes come entirely from the urban renewal district. They do not come from the whole county. The whole county is not at risk for those taxes. That is a misconception, which has been stated over and over by the proponents of 3-386. Furthermore, if 3-386 is passed, gets more votes than 3-388, it will effectively shut down urban renewal in our county, unincorporated districts of our county. Why is that? Because of the unwillingness of people outside the urban renewal district to vote for urban renewal in a district far from their own places, especially when there will be misconceptions spent by the opponents of strong governments, opponents of working together to solve common problems. And I'm thinking particularly of the Tea Party, which was trying to bring down our governments. This will make it almost impossible for any urban renewal district to succeed.
The next two I have up are Fran Mazara and Sonia Polly. But before we, and you can, you can come on up, but I was going to have staff, perhaps, I don't know if it should be you, or Steve, or Dan, but respond to the, to another clarifying issue regarding urban renewal and, and whether it uses existing tax, redirects existing taxes, and, and what parts of the county are paying it or are burdened, or just, you know, a three-sentence version of how urban renewal works, so we're all clear.
I'll defer to the county administrator on that question.
Well, what I think you're trying to clarify is that urban renewal redirects, redirects existing tax money into a different bucket, if you will. It doesn't increase that.
It doesn't redirect existing taxes. It redirects.
Future, yeah.
Future taxes.
Future taxes, I'm sorry, right.
It freezes current taxes. It doesn't redirect existing taxes. It redirects the.
The future, which is then.
Future increment.
Right.
And, and, and then the other thing I wanted to clarify is that, is that the impact is greatest where there are the most overlapping districts, which is the local area. And as you get further away, the impact is less of that redirection.
That's, that's correct.
And, and, and so, and the, and the other thing that hasn't been pointed out is that urban renewal does benefit all the taxing entities in all the area eventually, when those roll back on, when those properties roll back.
When those come back on, yes, they come back at the higher taxing level, or, not that the rate has increased, but the amount is redirected.
The degree to which there's a burden countywide, there's also a benefit countywide.
Madam Chair, if I may, can I direct a question to the administrator? And because I've been hearing repeatedly some misconceptions of what areas are impacted by an urban renewal district. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe my direct question, that I got a written response from the tax assessor, was that, let's say that an urban renewal district is, the boundary of an urban renewal district happens to be down the street, down the center of a street, the boundary. And on one side of the street is a house that's in the district, and the opposite side of the street is a house that's on the outside of the district. Assuming their property values are the same, both will have, their property tax redirection of the future increment is equal on both sides. That's, that's the assessor's confirmation, as I posed a question to him. So the, the argument that I keep on hearing is, is that, that the impacts and the tax redirection is only within the district. And I, I understand that from the assessor's explanation and staff's explanation, that is not true, that the, that the spread is outside of the district as well. Can, can you, can you verify or correct?
First of all, I'm not going to challenge the assessor's written response. And dealing with a hypothetical question in a verbal situation is a little bit difficult. So I'll defer to what the assessor said, but in general, in a general sense, the redirection or the, the impact is diminished the further you get from the project area. And I'll leave it at that.
The other thing I wanted to state for clarification, that there is a mechanism for a local area to do an improvement in their area if they so choose, called an LID, which stands for Local Improvement District. Those are done for lighting, they're done for sidewalks, if, if a community so chooses. So there is an existing mechanism, if a local area, and it is really the only that I know of, it is the only mechanism that applies for a local issue, so they have an opportunity to improve their area. I, I just, I want to take this opportunity to let some folks know that I have to be in Salem at 1:00, so I'll be leaving early, and I'll, and I'll listen to the tape and listen to the rest of the testimony afterwards. I would really appreciate that everyone do, be respectful, everyone, and we are commissioners, and though we may disagree, we have to work with each other and we respect one another. And so I, I appreciate all the compliments, whether they're good or bad. But it would be nice for all of us, it would, I would certainly request and respect that everyone, not singled out. I appreciate, I'm flattered sometimes with some of the positive comments, but I really appreciate the comments on all sides, but to be, to be singled out for any of us, positive or negative, is, if you can please avoid that, I'd appreciate it.
Administrator Wheeler, I'd love to ask a clarifying question, and that is, the local improvement district concept, and perhaps the question goes to staff in the back, if you have the answer instead. To create a local improvement district is to increase taxes, correct? To create a local improvement district is to increase taxes, correct? And in contrast, urban renewal prioritizes tax dollars that would be collected under any event for different purposes. So, there's a difference in terms of, one increases taxes, one prioritizes in new ways the use of tax dollars that would already be collected. Is that correct?
I would say that's generally correct. The local improvement district has to have a zone of benefit, and that zone of benefit is agreed to by the people to share that, and they willingly agree to increase their tax to repay, most likely, a debt obligation that's issued to improve that zone of benefit area in the local improvement district.
So, it's an increase in taxes versus prioritization of existing taxes.
May I add one, one fact that you're missing? There is a third method, and that's called a TIF plan. Tax Increment Financing has been used in Cannon Beach, in Sisters, and Government Camp.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just one, one thing to respond. You can create a local improvement district, is my understanding, and you can choose to fund it in different ways. Urban renewal is often funded with TIF, as this lady has pointed out, and TIF can be, as I understand, can be used for other mechanisms as well. So, there, there are other options of implementing a local improvement district, other than taxes.
Okay. Before we get too far afield, because Fran should have the floor, and I don't know if, is Sonia not here?
No, I'm here. I thought I was—
Okay. So, you are up, Fran.
My name is Fran Mazara. I live at 25901 East Highview Drive in Welch's, Oregon. There are approximately five communities that comprise the villages up on Mount Hood. We total approximately 2,000 voters. So, we're not very big. Everybody knows 26 going through Welch's and the only traffic light for the next 80 miles. During the 96 floods, Salmon River Road slid. The culvert under it filled with debris, and water coming off Hunchback Mountain undermined the road. When it came down, it took out the two-story log home below it, with the elderly owners sleeping on the second floor in their bed. The whole mass slid through my house, destroying half of it. I'm certain none of you heard of this, and none of you cared. Last winter, the Zigzag River jumped its banks. It didn't flood, it jumped its banks, 10 miles up Lolo Pass Road from 26. The community pulled together, and we set up emergency procedures. We loaned our cars to those who could not get theirs out. We brought our ATVs up so we could ferry people up the path that was cut by the volunteers, the fire department, and the Forest Service volunteers. We set up a place to eat in the Lions Club, and people just brought in hot food. There was no, your turn, your turn, your turn. You heard of none of this, and you did not care. The reason I bring this up is to demonstrate that even at times of great emergency, everyone lives in their own little corner of the world. Our needs on the mountain are totally different from your needs down here. There is a dirt path that runs along 26 that connects the villages. I'm sure none of you are even aware of it. You probably never noticed this. It enables people to walk or bike or push a stroller from one village to the other. We would love to have it paved. Are you going to vote for it? The TIF plan that developed Government Camp would never have happened. I was on that board, we had weekly meetings, and we turned Government Camp around. To expect the people of Milwaukee, or Lake Oswego, or Camby, to vote to spend money on our little footpath is not going to happen. Our meager resources could not mount a campaign to convince you to vote for it. Yet, by passing 386, that is what you are expecting us to do. The 386 campaign is based on scare tactics and lies.
Thank you.
My name is Sonia Pauli. I live in Milwaukee. I've lived there for the past 10 years. My husband and I are retired. I'm 74, he's 80. We take great pride in the fact that we live in a home that's completely paid for. Both of us have worked most of our lives to make that possible. And yet, I look at our property tax statement that just arrived the other day, and it's higher than last year, as was true the year before that, and the year before that, and the year before, and the year before, yeah, every year, it's always higher. I've never had, I've never seen one yet that's been lower. How high do you plan to raise my taxes? Are you going to get me to the place where I can no longer afford to live in the home that I've paid for? Because we have a retirement people's income, we can't go out and do anything to raise our income, and yet, we pay $570 a month to live in our house that's completely paid for, for the county. I see that there's an item on there that says, "I'm still paying $300 out of my tax monies to Clackamas Town Center." I never go to Clackamas Town Center. It's a rare thing that I do, but I'm, I'm helping to pay for it. Clackamas Town Center's been going on for pretty close to 30 years, and I don't hear any talk of bringing that to an end. So, I, I get to pay more and more. And then, this gentleman just pointed out that, when an urban renewal district is formed, that taxes are diverted from their intended use, which means fire, police, schools, libraries, things that all of us value. I can tell you, I value those things before urban renewal. Those things, police and fire and schools, are more important to me than urban development. And yet, you have the power to divert taxes that I'm paying into those other uses. I do not think this is fair. And, and I don't think that it's fair that my taxes continue to skyrocket until retired people, who've worked their whole lives to have a house that's paid for, belongs to them, can't afford to live in it because of your taxes. How much more do you think that we should have to pay per month to live in our house? Our house? Well, your house. We rent it from you, I guess. I guess that's how it works.[1028.11][1028.11](Laughter). Well, anyway, I think that any time that you are encumbering future taxes that are being diverted from their original intention to pay for an urban renewal project that I'm expected to help pay for, this is wrong. That's why I collected, I personally collected 400 signatures to put Measure 386 on the ballot. Nobody paid me. I did it because I saw a real need to speak to the commissioners, that there's a problem out here, that you folks need to listen to. And then, to have you try to put your measure up in competition to ours, you didn't even have a measure before ours, but you saw that you needed one when you saw that we got ours on the ballot.
The, the next two I have up are Janet Schoenhite and John Knotts. Anytime.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Janet Schoenhite, and I live at 13780 Southeast Fernridge Avenue, also on Oakville Ridge. I'm not one of those out-of-state people, as Commissioner Leninger was referring to in her email, where she was working to get people to come and support her measure at this hearing. I was born in Oregon City, and like that other man, I was born in the old hospital, went to Clackamas Community, and graduated from PSU. But evidently, we think differently. So, I've lived here almost 61 years, and I care about the county. I do. Maybe you don't think I do. But I, I think, from what Commissioner Leninger said in her email, she does not understand about Americans for Prosperity, and what we are and what we do, just like that other man who thought we were trying to get rid of government, which is not true at all. We are just trying to get the majority's view across to those in government, so maybe they'll listen and do what we think is best. Americans for Prosperity is a national company, but they do not generally give money to various states. The money that is donated in each state is used in that state, for just the reasons you're trying to promote in your ads for your Measure 388. And therefore, you don't understand that us in AFP, I belong to AFP, and you are the reason why I belong in AFP. And you need to listen to us, and this is why we are here and doing this, not to bring down government, but to make government more accountable, more physically responsible, because studies have shown that when states and countries give more right, personal and personal property rights to their citizens, that they become more prosperous. And that's where the prosperity in AFP comes in. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm John Knotts from Sandy, Oregon. Thank you very much for the time allowed here, and my applause to the young lady who spoke before we sat down. Love her. Three thanks, in response to the expose from the tax assessor's office last week. I would like to share with all of the commissioners and everyone here, representing everybody, a little information that might help people out when they read and hopefully understand their tax statement. I had, in the last handful of years, three instances on my tax statement that came about because of an unpleasant discussion with the tax assessor at an open forum in Sandy, and I insisted someone come out and explain to me how we got to the numbers we were, rather than throwing a dart at a spinning board. Someone did come out, and the first question asked when I called the assessor's office was, "Do you have a full basement?" I said, "No, I don't." "Well, I'll have to get some papers out for signature to you, Mr. Knotts." And I said, "Well, not so fast. What seems to be the problem?" "Well, it seems you've been taxed for a full basement." I said, "Since when?" He said, "Since the house went on the tax rolls well over 30 years ago." I said, "How did this occur?" "Well, we really don't know, but we have to get it taken care of." So, it, it allowed me not to fill out an appeals form. We took care of it on the telephone, which was nice, because now there's no record of this thing occurring. A year later, I called for an appeals form. They asked, "What for?" I said, "It's nothing we need to discuss. When you get the appeals form, I will have come up with something."[1368.28][1368.28](Laughter). At that point in time, I was transferred to a supervisor. The supervisor asked me what my problem was. I said, "In accordance with your boss, I'm asking for an appeals form. I'd like to file an appeal." "And what would this be in reference to?" And I said, "I really don't know at this point. Maybe you can help me." He then proceeded to read to me over the telephone my complete tax statement, not knowing who he was speaking to. At that point, as he read down to the building, and the land, and everything, et cetera, et cetera, he came to 1,000 square feet of concrete. I said, "Stop there. 1,000 square feet of concrete? Not inclusive of the garage, or my shop, or the home, or entryways, or exits? No. You must have 1,000 square feet of concrete." I said, "Where?" "Somewhere on this 1.2 acres." "Yes." I said, "Could you tell me where it is? You're the one taxing for it." I asked a visit, which I couldn't get, because I wanted to put a building on it. Needless to say, it didn't exist. Several years after that, I received my tax statement, and in addition to everything else, we have a Veterans Service Connected Tax Exemption and Service Connected. I was given the lower rate, at which time I called the commissioner's office, or tax assessor's office, excuse me, and relayed to this, to them, and they said, "Well, Ed, there's apparently been a mistake. You do qualify for the greater of the two." I said, "So, I can expect a corrected tax statement?" They said, "No. We're shorthanded, and we're not authorized to give out corrected tax statements. It'll take about six months, in which we will give you payment vouchers." I said, "Why would you give them to me? The mortgage is through the VA." Called the VA, needless to say, I got a corrected tax statement, and it was done to every veteran in Clackamas County. I suggest that, albeit these mistakes, people read their tax statements and become familiar with what's going on in the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be excused.
Yes. The next two I have are William Ware and Larry Skidmore.
My name is William Ware, 14754 Southeast Y East Avenue, Damascus, Oregon. I'm here in support of Measure 3-386. I'm opposed to Measure 3-388. Earlier this month, there was a front-page article in The Oregonian concerning a squabble between Oregon Justice Department lawyers over the amount of pay increases they were getting. Some had settled earlier for less than 4%. Now, other public employee lawyers were getting a 9% increase. The 4%ers wanted what the 9%ers were getting. The governor soon stepped in and rescinded the pay raises and called for a review. In government work, a situation like that is called, quote, "bad optics," when the public hears about it. The public, on the other hand, just looks at it in disgust. A 9% increase for government employees, while jobs are disappearing in the private sector, businesses closing, homes tanking in value, and a financially broke state, is yet more proof of an out-of-touch government. If it wasn't for The Oregonian exposing it, we wouldn't have known. It would have just been another workday as usual. You've created your own bad optics with your countermeasure 3-388. Your countermeasure is a result of you, in these chambers, not allowing a vote on urban renewal issued by the citizens who put you in office. Citizens on their own then went out and got Measure 3-386 on the ballot to give all Clackamas County voters a voice in how their money is spent. But you then stuffed countermeasure 3-388 on the ballot to confuse voters. The last time I was here, I asked a simple question. How much is this countermeasure costing the taxpayers of this county? Still no answer. Not here, not by email, not by phone. It's silence your answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Larry Skidmore. I live at 120 West Hereford Street in Gladstone. I am a community activist, and coincidentally, the vice chair of the Clackamas Democratic Party, which has voted to support the passage of Measure 3388 and vote against Measure 3386. Our nation was born because of citizen objection to uninformed and uncaring control from outside its borders, and our Declaration of Independence lists a long series of such abuses. Local cooperation to meet local needs and aspirations is the essence of America at its best. A community barn-raising is the quintessential Americana. I want to thank the commission for drafting what has become 3388. Local vision for community needs is essential for community-appropriate development and bringing an improved future, and development of infrastructure has a long history of creating well-paying jobs and facilitating economic development. In the same manner, only local knowledge can identify flawed proposals and prevent costly and erroneous projects. Why should ill-informed voters in Welch's, or worse yet, those misled by radical propaganda, decide what is to be done in Oak Lodge? Why should they be able to impose a project they're known to the locals to be flawed, or block the local aspirations of those solely responsible for its costs? And to accomplish these violations of local responsibility, 3386 would require massively expensive county-wide elections, and lots of them. It astounds me that the very people who most adamantly support 3386 are those who most persistently object to what they view as government waste and excessive regulatory intervention. For example, community A telling community B what it can and can't do? We need to reaffirm government of the local people, by the local people, and for the local people. Finally, I find it contrary to the American traditions of freedom from coercion and of Finally, I find it contrary to the American traditions of freedom from coercion and of self-determination that those objecting to 388 and supporting 386 are doing so at the behest of out-of-state financing. It's time for Clackamas voters to tell Lauren Parks to tend to Nevada and leave Oregon to Oregonians, Clackamas to its local citizens. I turned in my ballot immediately. I call on every Clackamas voter to join me, substantiate 388 next 386. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Yvonne Ware and Yvonne Lazarus. And, um, and up after that is Lieutenant Powell, I think, I'm not sure, and Herb Chow.
The other lady was first.
She's coming.
She's coming. Well, my name is Yvonne Lazarus, and I live in Oak Grove. I have only one question. I do not care who answers it. You did not have my email, but I put it on the little green sheet. I want to know, and this question has been asked over and over and over again, where is the 25 million coming from? We should have an answer to that. And I would appreciate it that I could have that answer by the time we have another Commissioner's meeting. Thank you.
Actually, we'll address it after citizen communication here. We'll wrap this up.
Uh, my name is Yvonne Ware. My address is a matter of record. My memory skills are shot, so I'm gonna have to read this. I do, uh, wonder why people, uh, leave during the middle or the beginning, actually, because there are a lot of people still here. Uh, I think it's kinda rude to leave in the middle of a meeting. Maybe they're just gonna go home and watch it on TV. I'm here to urge a yes vote on 3386. I, I do compliment, uh, the people on the other side who do present, uh, a good argument and, uh, presented well, and I think that's what people want to applaud. I believe it's important that all the voters of Clackamas County have a right to have a say in how their tax dollars are spent. 3386 will do this. To have all of the citizens of Clackamas County have their essential services, such as teachers, policemen, firefighters, and first responders, curtailed over a period of time, is not fair. Measure 3388 would restrict those various services. We are in an economic crunch with a broke national government, state government, and county government, with the possibility of a double-dip recession looming. This only puts more pressure on an already rough situation. Measure 3386 gives us a chance to make sure our dollars are spent wisely. We want more accountability from our government. We want to make sure that when an urban renewal district is created, it is solid financially and delivers what it is supposed to. Measure 3386 does this. Thank you.
Okay. The next ones up are Lieutenant Powell and Herb Chow. And, and after that, we have Richard and Les.
I'm a retired military officer. First, I want to apologize for, uh, raising my hand and speaking out of turn. But I also want to comment on the fact that, um, to anyone who believes that 388 is actually something for the people of Clackamas County, Winning Mark deposited $27,952 to defeat 388. We have Kramer's Metro Mailing Service, GBA Strategies, Providence Health, Yes for Transit, Portland General Electric, Northwest Natural Gas, Oregon Association of Realtors, Morel Inc., Waste Management, National Association of Industrial, and again, Winning Mark at, uh, $1,268. So anybody who thinks that 388 was paid for by in-county people is making a mistake. The second thing that it, that is important is that it's gonna take a bond, or it's gonna take a urban renewal measure like thirty years to do any payback for the citizens. So any idea that, that the money is gonna come from anything but diminishing services is a mistake. The Sheriff's Department's losing people. Other agencies are losing people. But your administrative costs for the county continue to climb. Your administrative costs should be balanced against what the revenue of the county is, and our budget's gone from a deficit of somewhere around 24 million to, what, 235 million? I'd like an answer on what your actual debt is now from 2008 to 2011. Thirty-two people, thirty-two companies outside the county paid into this campaign to defeat 3, um, 86. And, and all of you who are complaining should ask why. The Sowood Bridge should have been fixed by Portland, Oregon, or by Portland and Monoma County in the eighties. It has nothing to do with Clackamas County. They sucked all the money out for light rail instead of fixing the bridge, and then they wanna whine about us paying for it. Frankly, I feel like you're insulting us as individuals, and, and I'm very, very ashamed to say that it's, it's disgusting to come in and listen to these meetings, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
I wanted to, to, uh, share with you today, uh, a little bit more about what was going on on a July 26, 2011 meeting, where Clackamas County voters were, were basically laughed at and conspired against while you were thinking of the 3-388. The only exception is Paul Savas did try to get a more balanced approach to it if you were to put something on it, but you folks pretty much resigned that issue. So one of the things, and this, this starts off with it, because this is, this is one of those Perry Mason moments that are so rare. And so it says, "One of the things we wanted to talk about," and this is on that meeting, that staff meeting, uh, and, and Jamie, you were not around, uh, that day. And so I wanted to make sure that, uh, Mr. Mad, Mad Coe? Coe?
Close enough.
Okay. County Council and, and Stephen Sedaris was there. Uh, also, Stephen, Steve Wheeler, yourself was there, too. Okay? So here's what the, the discussion is, is one of the things we wanted to talk about was Urban Renewal Limitation Initiative. I have Scott Sedaris and Dan Chandler here to amplify on it. Should the Board consider deplacing the alternative measure on it on the ballot, it would be wise to seek outside legal opinion on issues related to petition being circulated now. I understand there's a, there's an issue of trying to, to control, um, your liability and things like that, and trying to get a second opinion so you could show at least you did make good faith. So I want, I wanna read what was going on at that meeting, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you hear, 'cause this is so unbelievable. Jim Bernard, so, so, so if would, somebody asked me a question today. So what would happen if both passed? In other words, 386 and 388? Scott Sedaris, certainly. We would have a provision in ours that says ours trumps. Jim Bernard, okay. Jim Bernard, well, that's simple, huh? And then everybody laughs. Charlotte Leehan, you laugh, along with a few of your other folks that were there. And then Scott Wheeler responds, "We declare victory." I thought you folks were supposed to be representing us. So I want, I want everybody to hear this. Some of those that are drinking Kool-Aid might wanna listen to this, especially close.
Somebody asked me a question today, so what if both passed? Certainly. We would have a provision in ours that says ours trumps. What? That's simple, huh? We declare victory.
Here it is again. If you didn't get it that first time, here it is again.
Somebody asked me a question today, so what if both passed?
The time is, has ended, so you need to push the stop button.
We would have a provision in ours that says ours trumps.
Mr. Chow, you need to end now.
I think that makes the point on why you're not trusted.
May I ask a clarifying question, uh, Council? So, um, Council Madcor, could you, um, could you speak to whether or not the, the measure that was placed on the ballot has a provision in it that says no matter what, it would trump? Or, or is the issue, is, is the actual situation that whichever measure wins by more votes is the one that would take effect? I think there's some confusion about that.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Leiniger, there seems to be. The ballot measure, 88, says that whichever measure receives the most votes by the registered voters of Clackamas County, that measure will be the controlling measure. The references to the Trump language was, I believe, the very first draft prepared by county staff and presented to this Board and never endorsed by this Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the only thing I would clarify on that is that they, it is certainly possible that they would both fail, in which case neither one would take effect. So, sure. They could both get, and they could both get, uh, no votes.
No votes.
They could both, they could both fail, in other words, 'cause you might have eighty percent of the people say no to both of them. And that, and that is a possibility. Uh, or they could both pass, or one could pass and one could fail. There, there are four possibilities there. So the, the question was, what if they both pass? That, and, and that's the, what we were clarifying.
Most votes, correct.
Um, yes. So La, uh, Les is up next, and, or Les and Richard, whichever way you wanna go.
Are these our last votes?
No, no, no. Start the clock over. That's never been the case in the past.
It's the case now.
Uh, who says?
Because you're, you're, you're taking longer and longer to get yourself ready.
I want, I want next week the Clackamas County rule on when the clock starts, and I want to have that written current rule.
It starts when you take your seat.
And if it's your choice to do that, then we understand this dictatorial. Do you understand?
It is my choice as the chair, so.
Oh, really? Okay, so these rules are your rules, is that correct?
It's, it's your turn to speak, and you can go ahead and speak now.
Let the record show the, the incredible arrogance of Charlotte Leehan and the business with this clock today. Outrageous. My name is Richard Langdon, Portland, Oregon. I live in Portland, Oregon. I have businesses here in Clackamas County, and I'm a, I create jobs here in Clackamas I want to thank everyone that came here today, because this is how we change the behavior of people like Charlotte Leehan, by coming here and voicing our opinions and asking them questions and expecting answers. It is reasonable for any person that comes here and asks a question to expect an answer. I have a whole lot of questions, but only have time for a few, particularly since of this business with the clock. Outrageous. Incredible. I hope a lot of viewers at home watch that. That's who we have for commissioners, and the Chair does that. Ann Leiniger, I gave you a document earlier. I had Mary give it to you. I wanted to know if that document, it was a document that was sent out to a number of people asking to show up here today. It looked, it appears to be an email document. Was that sent out by you?
Yes, it was.
Good. I have a question, I have all kinds of questions, because there's inaccuracies all the way through it. The, turn, please, to the one page that says, uh, that has an asterisk by it, the one, I don't, I, I need to be able to read that. I apologize. Let me find it now, since I've been cut short on my time. Well, it was, it was a sentence that the, it, within the urban group, uh, excuse me, within the UG, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, within the urban rural district, that's where the debt has occurred, and that's who's obligated for the debt. We need some clarity. Is this debt an obligation of only people inside of the urban rural district? Or is this debt an obligation of everyone countywide? We expect an answer. It's very simple. Thank you, Ann, for the answer.
Thank you very much for your active engagement in Clackamas County.
The answer to the question, please.
I believe that the information in this is true, and that's why I wrote it down.
No, the, no, the answer to the question, this is a simple one. Are the people countywide obligated for the debt, or just people inside of the urban rural district?
Mr. Langdon, your, your time is now out and over.
Let the record know that Ann Leiniger refused to answer that simple question.
And I've explained to you many times that, uh, that this is not a time to engage the Commissioner.
And I have asked you to bring with you this week, and you didn't do it, I don't think, the Clackamas County written rule that require, that, that doesn't allow you to answer questions.
Your time is finished, and if you don't step down, we'll have the deputy ask you.
You'll do what? I'm sorry?
I'll have the deputy ask you to leave. It's your, your, you're out of order. Les.
Les Poole, Oak Grove. I wonder how many people that have testified on behalf of Measure 388 today will be here next week, 'cause you know I will be. That silent majority keeps asking me to put my name on the ballot, Jim, and it's gotten so ugly, I'm starting to think about it. Mr. Langdon's frustration is from the business community. Do you have any idea what the true costs are for how the county is being run? Does anyone have an answer to that? Can anyone sit in this room and tell me that thirty years from now, we know what the tax return is gonna be on these investments in urban renewal? I'm not against urban renewal, and I believe that if it was properly addressed, properly used, and certainly if the citizens were actively involved and the urban renewal projects were not totally dominated by Metro and TriMet, you'd see some approval for them. I heard from business owners and folks that are financial beneficiaries of urban renewal tout it today. I imagine that if I were a supporter of 388 and there was gonna be an urban renewal district in my area, and it was gonna rezone the property at a higher value and bring in development and investment, I imagine I'd have a financial gain. So you bet I'd vote for that. So really, 388 really is a rigged election, isn't it? And how did we get to 388? How did we get to 386? How come all of this is all my fault? Pretty easy question to answer, because urban renewal has been abused, and they're proposing using it to convert the Gladstone Nature Park into a library while downtown Gladstone is ignored. Urban renewal is being proposed at Portland State University again. We're gonna declare Portland State University blighted so we can afford to extend a very exotic rail line through southwest Portland and build a showpiece bridge. Eventually, we get to Milwaukee, which, of course, is looking to urban renewal, to support, to support its future. I have no, no questions about Milwaukee doing that, or Oregon City doing it, but I have one question. Can anyone tell me why there is an urban renewal district being designed at Park Avenue? Can anyone tell me why there is an urban renewal district being designed at Park Avenue? And would that happen without light rail? I'll expect an answer next week, and I will be here. And I apologize to Mr. Langdon for how he's been treated in the past. His frustration has been building understandably. Thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les.
Now, I think that we wanted to clarify a few things, and, and one of them is that I think Mr. Wheeler has a plan for when this, when the issue on, on funding for the 25 million is being addressed, so.
Yes, I think, I've been working carefully with our finance director, finance team, on this, and we do understand it's an issue, and I expect we'll have some, at least initial good, straightforward answers on possibilities by mid-November. Got to check out a few things, but we're working on it, and we'll have that.
Yeah. So, it's, it's scheduled for study session, or, or planned for study session sometime in mid-November?
Yeah, I don't have it on, on a date yet, but I'm thinking in mid-November, we should be able to get back to the board with some options to fund that.
Well, well, we know, we know generally that, and this goes to an issue that was raised before, when someone said we had no idea when Clackamas Town Center was ending. We have committed to ending Clackamas Town Center in a very formal way, July, June.
June 30th, 2013.
July 1, but, July 1, or June 30th. June 30th, I stand corrected, of 2013. So, and that was, that's been, been committed to by the full commission. That will free up money, so.
Yes, I think the most likely scenario, but we haven't locked in on anything.
Locked it in.
As an overlapping district, that will free up some money that will go into the general fund, and the hope is possibly that will approximate what we would need for a bond issuance to pay for the 25 million, and that would cover that.
Yeah, so it increases the general fund.
Right.
But the particulars of that will have a fuller report in November.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
I have a clarifying question for County Council Steve Madcor. Some people have presented testimony that makes, that creates an impression that if 388 were to pass, then the only people who'd be deciding on creation of an urban renewal district would be folks who live in the boundaries of the potential district. But I'd like your confirmation that in fact, the county commissioners, the majority of the county commissioners who are elected representatives would, would first have to approve the notion that it's a good enough idea that it should be referred to the ballot. Is that correct? Or is it in fact that the decision would be totally delegated to people within the boundaries of a proposed plan area?
It's my understanding that it still has to be referred by the board, correct, to the voters.
Right, so there'd be some local vote, but there would also be board-level majority approval needed, as is the case now. So there's additional voting, but not at the expense of having board-level approval be necessary, in case people are confused about that.
Countywide votes are initiated by way of initiative such as the 86 process, through signatures, or by board referral such as 88. Correct. It's either one or the other. That's how it would get in front of the county voters.
But I think your question was, citizens would not be able to put something on the ballot that says, "We want an urban renewal district," and get one without, they could stop one, but they couldn't create one without the Board of Commissioners.
Not under the language of 88 as proposed, correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bernard.
One of the statements was that the county's currently operating under a deficit. Is that true?
No, that's not accurate. We're not allowed to operate under deficit. Under Oregon budget law, the strict language is, your resources, which are otherwise often called revenues, have to at least equal your requirements, and we're bound by that, and we operate that way.
The other was that, actually, by statute, governments, and if I'm not right, please correct me, cannot exceed 2% of the assessed value of the county, and we are below 2% of the assessed value.
Let me, let me just adjust that slightly. General obligation debt cannot exceed 2% of real market value.
Okay.
And we are well, well under 2% of real market value. Thank you.
As long as we're talking about percentages, I wanted to, the other thing that I had learned this week was, and I looked at staff to correct me if I'm, if I am misspeaking, but that 60% of the urban renewal that people see on their tax statements, generally speaking, in Clackamas County is, is attributable to urban renewal districts in cities, or something.
Oh, in terms of total?
Of the, of the total, of the urban renewal entities that we have underway in Clackamas County, 60% of them are city urban renewal districts, and the counties is the other 40.
That sounds approximately correct to me. I haven't verified those figures, but many cities run urban renewal.
And those, and that 60% that the cities pass, neither of these measures will address.
Right.
So neither 388 or 386 has any say over that 60% of urban renewal that is occurring in cities. So it is only in unincorporated, and this was the other thing that I think was not clear, it's, it's only in urban, unincorporated Clackamas County, which is very limited. So it really is largely about Oak Grove and Clackamas Town Center. Little, you know, we had minor, a minor urban renewal district that has since closed in Government Camp, and, but it's a very, it's a very limited area that the whole county would have, have to vote on, in the case of 386. But they, but it doesn't give the right to vote on urban renewal districts in Wilsonville or Lake Oswego, or, or anywhere else that is inside a city. And, and that accounts for a huge piece of it, of what's urban renewal in Clackamas County is in cities. Yes.
One thing I'd, I'd be interested in finding out, what was the length of time that Government Camp, Urban Renewal District was in existence? If Dan was here, he could tell me. I mean, not, not that Dan, the other Dan.
We could get that answer. I don't, don't have that.
It was what?
I, I don't have the specific answer. We could get that easily.
That was in 89, and it was put in to place just before West Western was built.
We appreciate your, your comments that we.
I will just repeat back, it was 1989, and it was, and it was closed, I believe, last year.
Yeah, a year or two ago.
So that was, was not 30 years, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Any clarifying issues, questions?
The only clarifying question I have is, just to make sure that people understand that we have, and help me with this, Steve, we have two open urban renewal districts right now, is that right?
Correct, we have two.
And we have passed a resolution that one of them will be closed, as Chair Lehan had said, in the end of June, which means we will have one left. And which one is that again?
The one that would be left is the North Clackamas Revitalization Area.
And how big is that?
In acres, in the hundreds. I'm not, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can get that.
And how long has it been in place?
I believe that was established in 2006.
So it's a fairly recent one.
Very recent, yes.
And do we have any plans in place right now to establish any new urban renewal districts?
None that I'm aware of, no.
Commissioner Bernard.
Actually, that was one of the comments, too. I heard that there was a plan to create an urban renewal district in Oak Grove, and I'm not aware of that. I know there is an effort to look at some of the needs in Clack, in the Oak Grove area, that at some point, an urban renewal plan would be considered. But as far as the North Clackamas, I was mayor at the time that district was formed, and the reason that district was formed is because there were no sewer pipes. People's septic systems were failing. The community, basically, you couldn't sell your home with a failing septic tank, and there wasn't enough property to create enough land to replace those under current standards. So this was actually a really important project that brought sewers to that area, increased the values of that community, and is still in the process of growing. But it was a project that protected Johnson Creek and, from failing septics, a very good project, very well managed, actually paid down the difference between hooking up to the sewer line, that normally would be the cost, you know, in the 20s, $20,000. It paid down portions of that, so that it was affordable to the people who lived in that neighborhood, those communities.
I think that's all, I think that's about all I had, as notes that we needed to get back to specifically to clarify. So.
I need to ask to be excused to get to a meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing that would be valuable, if people do have questions they would actually like answered, please submit them in writing. We'd be happy to answer them. Of course, they have to be questions we can answer, like, "Why don't you listen to us?" is going to be a little tough to answer. We did actually listen when we did the resolution to dissolve Clackamas Town Center, which is something that I've supported for decades. I think my first campaign in 2001 as Mayor of Milwaukee, I thought that Clackamas Town Center should have been dissolved then, and I think we need to sit down and talk about that list of projects. But it is something that's gone along, on for a long time, and I do agree. I guess I would just love to add one other thing, is that I agree, we have some tax laws that need to be changed. Our taxes are going up every year. It's a problem. Measure 5 and 50 actually were voted on by the people, actually caused some of those problems. It's not a simple solution, and I'd love to actually, you know, look to the citizens of Clackamas County, Oregon, and talk about, what are we going to do to fix this? Because you shouldn't be taxed out of your home. I totally agree, and a lot of the new measures really increased a lot of tax burden on the taxpayers. All of them, I agree, were needed. But it is a burden that we need to, as a state, as citizens of this state, sit down and figure out once and for all how to resolve this burden.
I would agree with that as well, because Oregon has, part of the reason our property taxes are so high is because we have the two-legged stool instead of the three-legged stool without a sales tax. And, and I think there are lots of models, if you look at many other states, and, and you can, can be in favor or not in favor of a sales tax or personal income tax, but whichever way, if you decide you're only going with one of them, or only going with two of them, it makes that, that one, it becomes much larger. And, and so compared to Washington State, for instance, our property tax is much higher, because they, they are able to spread that on more mechanisms than we do in Oregon. So.
Yeah, Chair Lehan, I was going to say some of my comments for Commissioner Communication, but I think it's more apt to, to address some of the things that we've heard today, since I haven't said too much.
No.
So if I can, just say a few things.
Sure.
So a couple of things. First, I mean, a number of people have already left, and I wish that they were still here, so I could thank them personally for coming. I mean, I think it, it heartens me as a new commissioner to see a packed room full of people, when the last time we had this large conversation, I, as you see, my head is down quite a bit. I take a lot of notes, pages and pages of notes. And the last time and this time, what strikes, what strikes me is how, equal comments on both sides. We had, we almost heard equal comments on both sides. And that's, that's good. That helps us as commissioners, when you give us the information so that we can make better decisions. I'm still a little bit surprised by some of the testimony, because I thought that when we passed the Resolution 5-0 back in, when was it, in August, that we really are trying to incorporate some of the things that we're hearing from all of you. For example, there was a lot of concern about, you know, why, why don't you close Clackamas Town Center? Not, not close it, but you understand, the urban renewal district. And we passed in our resolution that we would. Don't use urban renewal for funding the Portland, Portland to Milwaukee light rail. And we passed in the Resolution 5-0 that we wouldn't. We don't know exactly how we're going to fund it yet. We haven't had the study session and the work session and the, the business meetings about that. Those will be coming up on our agenda, as Chair Lehan has committed to, and we'll, and I look forward to that conversation, and your input on that as well. There, we also heard that people were very concerned about the lack of oversight from a citizen perspective, about how urban renewal is used or modified, and we put in our resolution a commitment to establishing a task force for that, for those districts, to make sure that that would happen. You've heard me say over and over again, as I've heard the concern about a vote, about how we're making our investments with taxpayer money in the county, that I support a vote, that, and that's one of the reasons why I'm supporting 3, you know, 3388. But I also, ultimately, to me, I mean, we have two choices on the ballot, and I really look forward to seeing what the other 360,000 people that live in our county, not that they're all voting citizens, but that's the population of our county, I look forward to see what they're going to say on this, because that helps me. We're going to have a different, we're going to be doing things differently with urban renewal after the election, regardless of what the outcome is. And, and I hope that we will have more of your testimony to help us figure out how we move forward. So even if both of them go down, we've got a resolution that we've committed to doing things differently with urban renewal in our county. So I just want to put all that out there, because I'm heartened by all of that. But the, the other piece, just to be on my soapbox just for a minute, because I don't get to be on a soapbox very often, but the other piece that I wanted to share is, and that's why I asked the questions of Administrator Wheeler about, you know, how many districts we have. I worry somewhat that we've, we've given a bit too much life to this issue. Not that it isn't an important issue, because it does, I mean, what I hear is that we want, taxpayers want more say in how we invest in their money in our county, and I totally agree with that. But I worry that we're using up precious social capital. There's not a lot of revenue to go around in terms of funding these kinds of initiatives and, and all of that. And I worry that, will there be enough social capital left to address some of the issues that I'm really concerned about, which is making sure that our sheriff's office is fully funded, making sure that we've got our infrastructure that we need to attract jobs, making sure that we can maintain our roads, that we've got some funding source for that, making sure that, you know, regardless of what's going to happen at the federal level, we have some way to continue to support our most vulnerable citizens in our county with social services. These are really big issues for me. These are a really big deal. And, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm heartened by how much passion and involvement there is in the county around urban renewal. I'm surprised, you know, honestly, but in the last five months, how much passion there is, and I know it's more than just urban renewal. But I really hope that you'll be here, that you'll pack this room, and we're having these other conversations, too, because these are things that I'm really, that I'm really concerned about, that I, that I really do care about. So that's my plea to all of you. Please don't use up all your social capital and all your fundraising capacity on, on urban renewal. Work with us to do it differently, and, and work with us on these other issues that I think are more of a crisis, and affect many, many more people in our county than the urban renewal issue does, so. That's my, that's my, that's my soapbox.
And I, I would like to also thank everyone for coming, and, and for, and for being as respectful to both sides, both sides being respectful to the other side, because we had a lot of people on both, on both sides of this issue. I did want to, the other thing I wanted to clarify is, when, when you say, you know, they could both fail, in the, in the city of Wilsonville, in the, when I was mayor, the, we didn't have a requirement to vote on urban renewal, but we always put it out for a vote. And, and certainly, no one on this commission was here at the creation of Clackamas Town Center, or the other one, that I, the other two, I keep forgetting the name of.
North Clackamas Revitalization Area.
Revitalization, yeah. North Clackamas Revitalization. Revitalization, yeah, North Clackamas Revitalization. We were not here for the creation of any of those, but if we were to consider a, an urban renewal district in the future, even if these were, both were to fail, there still is the possibility that we could choose to put that out for a vote of some sort. And, and that is what we always did at the city of Wilsonville, and were successful in getting them passed, but, but that was just inside the city of Wilsonville. But, so that, it's not precluded that we would do that even so. And, and with that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and I will ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title only.
Okay. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a facilities use, use, youth, use agreement with North Clackamas School District Number 12. Approval to apply for the Health Resources and Services Administration Affordable Care Act Capital Development Building Capacity Grant under the scope of the federally qualified health center. Approval to apply for the Health Resources and Services Administration Affordable Care Act Capital Development Immediate Facility Improvement under, grant under the scope of the federally qualified health center. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the Year 22 Metro and Local Government Annual Waste Reduction Plan and Recycle at Work Program. Approval of a maintenance agreement project for the I-205 MAX Extension Light Rail Project, Southeast Johnson Creek Boulevard, Southeast Sunnyside Road. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the Oregon Department of Corrections, and approval of the 2011-2012 Clackamas County Community Corrections Biennial Plan. And that concludes the consent agenda.
I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair Lee Han, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Damon and seconded by Commissioner Bernard that we approve the consent agenda. And I will note here that, that the consent agenda is available online in great detail. If you want to see more than the titles of these items, you can see them there. Is there any discussion on any of the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And now we come to Commissioner Communication. Is there more, Commissioner? Oh, well, one thing is, that we did hear, was there was a problem with voter pamphlets not getting to certain areas of Oak Grove and, and ballots in spotty areas. Perhaps you could address what, what people should do if they either did not get a voter's pamphlet or did not get a ballot.
Well, first of all, I'll say that we've been in touch with the county clerk, and they're very active in investigating just what happened. It may be a problem with postal delivery, we're not sure, but by all means, contact the county clerk's office to get a ballot if you didn't get one, or the voter's pamphlet, or both, if you didn't get them. And we, I'm sure the county clerk would like that to happen, and we want to make sure they're out.
And this is true in any election.
Absolutely.
If you don't have your ballot for any reason, if you lost it, the dog ate it, it doesn't matter, you can always contact.
There's a process for dealing with it.
Contact elections, and they will help you get a replacement ballot, so, no excuses. Any other Commissioner Communication we need to?
I have more.
You have even more?
Do you want to go, or do you want me to do mine? I just have two things.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've got two things. And one is, I got a note from Commissioner Savis, who asked that I remind everybody or let everybody know that we are going to be having an informal meeting, if you will, just an informal forum, on November 2nd at 5:30. The information's on the screen, it's in the Development Services Building, and it really is an opportunity that we, we as commissioners have been hearing a lot of, you know, give us other opportunities to talk with you, more in formal ways, so you're not up on the dais, and we can ask you questions. And so on November 2nd, we're going to be having one of those, and Commissioner Savis and I will be there, I think we'll have other commissioners there as well. And so, and we hope to hold these, we're, we're going to see how it goes, and after the first one, we get feedback from the people that are there. And we would, we're hoping to have these every first Wednesday of the month, so that it's an informal time for you to come and, and talk with us about things that are important to you. So, there's that. The other is, I would like to make you aware of an organization that you may not be aware of, that Commissioner Bernard and I attended last night in Salem. It's called the Military Child Education Coalition. And there was a convening of people from, there were people from across the United States there. And the purpose of this organization is to support children of military families, and children being defined as zero to 23. And it's, it's children whose parents, one or both are either deployed or have returned, are injured in some way, and it's a, it's an organization to provide resources and support them. One thing, a couple of things I learned, and Commissioner Bernard, jump in if you will, too. One of the things I learned is that Oregon is, is ill-suited to support our returning veterans, particularly their families, for a variety of reasons, but one of which is because our veterans come from pretty equally dispersed across our state. And so it makes it very difficult as counties to put, you know, critical services in place to support those veterans, because there might be, you know, a handful in some of our smaller counties. We have a number of veterans that are returning to rural counties, so they're very far from VA and from other services, and we don't have the large bases like they have in other, like Texas and California, which has this infrastructure in place for families, ready infrastructure for families to access services. So in, in order to fix that, in Oregon, one of the, a simple thing that people can do is you can ask your school district to start gathering data in their school district about who are the children of military families. Because if we can show that we've got some critical mass within different school districts, we can get some resources from this national organization to help those kids. And the other thing I found that was really interesting is, we listened to Attorney General John Kroger, and he, he's a former Marine, and he talked about, 25 years ago, when he was in the Marines, how it was mostly single men, you know, that were in the military, and how the face of the military has changed so much in 25 years, and how surprised he was when he attended a, I don't remember where he said it was, but it was a battalion that was returning from Afghanistan, and he was surprised to see, you know, first of all, how many women there were that had been deployed, but also how many families were waiting to receive them when they came back, how many young children, under the age of 10, under the age of five, who were there. And, and that's, it's a new face for the military. So this is a community concern, and I know that the folks at the, the Military Child Education Coalition, which was co-chaired for Oregon by Martha Schrader and Julie Parish, Representative Parish, that they would be very pleased to know that I was making appeal on their behalf, on, you know, to our citizens through our county telecast, to do something simple like understand who are the military children in your community, and provide, you know, either let your school district know, let Veteran Services know in our county so that we can get some additional resources for those kids. Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just, it, it's up on the web, on, on the screen, it's, you have the website, it's on there, so log on and take a look at it, and it's a great program, they had some tremendous videos. One particular video was about, I think it was in Nebraska.
North, North Platte.
North Platte, Nebraska. Every single train went through there during the war, was full of troops, over a million troops went. Every train was met by, with food, water, cakes, all those things, that, you know, these soldiers were given all hours of the night. People who, nobody knew who they were, and one gentleman who was suffering from Alzheimer's in his 80s, it was the only thing he could remember, was stopping in that town, getting out of that train for a few minutes, grabbing his food and going on, because that's the only thing he could still remember after all those years. And the desire is, is that Oregon will someday be that place, where vets can come home, or they can pass through, and they'll know that, that we're here to support them, or that the children who we support will be supported by the entire community, so that they remember that Oregon was the place that helped me.
Okay? Very nice.
Thanks. But the other thing, we also, you, you're done?
I am done.
We went to the Twolton Valley Fire and Rescue Dinner the other night, and they had a program that I hadn't heard about. It's apartment owners or landlords, it's a free class about fire prevention, how to prevent fires. So log on to their website, and that's also up on the screen. Log on to their website and take a look at that program. I do believe it starts pretty soon, so it might be next month. So take a look at that and log on.
November 15th.
Yeah, November 15th. So you can register, it's free, it's off, you don't have to live in Clackamas County to go to this class. I imagine they would prefer that you actually be a landlord, so please go to that class. One of the comments made, one of the most important things about getting people back to work is the fact that 50% of the vets coming home will be unemployed. And we need to find a way to make sure that they get the resources they need to either retrain or find a job. Clackamas County, we've decided to, or we're looking into how we could fund an additional officer, or whatever they call it, CSO?
VSO.
VSO. That could help people understand their, yeah, RICS.
Shorthanded.
Yeah, they are shorthanded, so we're looking at how we can try to speed up that process, make sure those people get the benefits they deserve. And so we're really working hard to beef that up. We've also, in our budget process, provided additional money for community corrections, for jail staffing, for motors, and patrol, because we think public safety is very important. And I hope you'll take a look at the sheriff's levy and consider voting yes. Was that, okay.
Did I add?
I want to be careful.
Yeah.
I also, you know, I, one of the budget processes we're going through is, or, or I should say, community corrections challenges, is almost a $900,000 cut this year in their budget from the state. There is a point that when they cut it enough, you can give it back to them. We don't want to do that, of course, that's called opt-out. But they've had a huge budget cut in community corrections, and we need, you know, to make sure that when the legislature gets back together, that citizens participate in communicating the need for a community corrections program. In that program, we have a drug court, which I went to a graduation the other day, very challenging, if, if, after many years. Those people, not only is it very expensive, it's, it's a program that's very successful. Actually, it's saved Clackamas County $5 million over the last few years, because they're getting people out of jails, out of prisons, out of drug programs, and out of the court system. So there, there are some great programs that we're, we're doing. We're also looking at a veterans' court. You know, a lot of vets come home, they're unemployed, they have PTSD, they, they find it challenging to get work, they may end up in our correction system. So one way to help them through the process, make sure they, they're given a chance rather than thrown into jail, is a veterans' court we're looking at. So Judge Tom is looking at a veterans' court, he does our DUII court, and it's a program that, that I'm pretty excited about. Some counties have tried it. I'm looking forward to his efforts and supporting his efforts to create a veterans' court, so that those people who, who served our country don't end up in our jails unemployed with no opportunity to turn their lives around. So, thank you.
Okay. And I would just close by reminding people of a couple of important dates coming up. One of them is November 8, which is Election Day, and besides the urban renewal issue, issues, two measures which are on the ballot, which we have covered in great detail, there is another very important measure on the ballot, and that's 3-dash, 3-7-8, 3-3-7-8, which is the renewal of the sheriff's levy, the five-year levy. And I will not advocate, but I will say that it's important that you pay attention to that one as well, important that you put your, get your ballot in by November 8. You can mail it, of course, there are also drop boxes at most public libraries, and where you can save yourself a stamp, or just around the corner here is a drive-by place that you can drop your envelope and also save yourself a stamp, in a drop box outside of the elections building. The other date coming up just after Election Day appropriately enough is Veterans Day on November 11th, since we've had all these veterans' programs described so well. And, and for me, that means, Veterans Day is the second most, as the president of my local cemetery association, Veterans Day is the second most important event of the year after, after Memorial Day. So I will be working this weekend and the following to get our cemetery ready and, and the records in order so that we can put flags on the veterans' graves, and, and that's an issue for, for a lot of places around the county as well. So another opportunity to volunteer, yes?
I, I just want to, and I agree that when people get up and leave, you know, I, I've gone to the legislature, and it's just crazy when these legislators walk out, and you think you're talking to somebody and, and all that, but, you know, I, I'm sure that, you know, we never know how long these meetings are going to last, but I, I wanted to apologize. It turns out you can't use a purple pen on a legal document, which I didn't know today, you have to use blue. So I had signed this initial, this legal document, I went out and signed it again, and then she realized, and she was a mile away, that I had used a purple pen, and had to come back and sign it again. Who would have guessed, purple pens?
And both of our other commissioners had meetings in Salem this afternoon that they had to leave early.
And I had to go to the bathroom.
And she had to go to the bathroom. Yeah, yeah. Okay, if there's no further, yeah, why don't we talk afterwards?
Please, let's change the date. Let's give the...
Oh, the business.
If there's no other business before the commission, we are adjourned.